No, no.
Regular twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and council. Please note that our meetings are open to the public here at City Hall. We'll continue to be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. Now we begin as we do every meeting with the pledge of the flag followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online and available online on the city's website. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and council on September 27th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
The moved.
It's a second by Mr. Dayhoff, but it's second by Mr. Hoth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If they're saying aye, the ayes seem to have the ayes habit, and the minutes are approved. Before we go any further, I just want to mention that last Friday marked one month of service for our new city administrator, Sarah Imholtz. We're pleased that she came back on Monday, despite all of our best efforts, I might add. So anyway, we won't make it a habit of noticing every month, but I did think after the first month, it was a decent.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly. We have a presentation tonight on Durbin House, the historic structure assessment final report. I know that's something we've been thinking about for quite some time. Mr. Grove of Grove and Delial Architects is here with us. Mr. Grove, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for having us. And my name is Matthew Grove, Grove and Delial. And with us tonight are the balance of my team today. We have Jay Bunce, and we have Alicia McCormick. We have McCormick Engineering, and Scott Grove with Grove PR. And we're all going to participate in this presentation tonight. So bear with us as we jump up and sit down throughout the course of the presentation. It's been a pleasure working on this project. Thank you all again for commissioning us. It's been a very exciting ten months. We started in December last year and had an amazing, it's been an amazing journey working together and working on the many facets of the Durbin House. In thirty minutes, we're going to try to convey a lot of what we learned, but certainly we can't convey everything to you. So here we are. Matt, do we want to keep, we need to keep these on here. So this report is made possible by a grant from Maryland Historic Trust along with funds from the Corporation of Westminster. And it's been a pleasure working with Abby and Heather and Zach and the whole crew at Public Works. Without those guys, we couldn't have been able to get in and see the building at multiple times in the course of the year. So I want to make sure we thank them. We also worked with many folks at Maryland Historic Trust and the State Archives, and we list them in the report too, because without them, this just wouldn't be possible. The report's made up of seven chapters, essentially, the eighth being our appendices. And we're going to focus in on essentially the three, four, five, six, and seven. The introduction and administrative is just that, and it's something that goes with every historic structures report. But the scope of the project essentially, as you all know, because it was in the RFP, is to analyze and evaluate the conditions of the Durbin House to better understand the history of it, the history of the ground it sits on, and also the history of the people that lived there. And in the end, we look at it from standpoint of what is the status? What is the condition of the house? What does it need to be put back in order? That's the direction it's supposed to do, and how much that would cost. So all those things are combined in this sort of multifaceted study. One of the real treasures or finds that we had, of course, the project is working with State Archives, we found this 1938 archival aerial photograph. And this photo was broader. It took in the entire city of Westminster. And but if you focused in, zoomed in, we found the Durbin Farm. And see if you can zoom in here. But you can see far up here in the upper left-hand corner. And what the benefit of this is that it shows us how access to the Durbin House and farm used to be and what is today, Tahoma Farm Road. And it traveled past the old stone quarry, the lime kilns, the old Durbin log residence, which is still there. And we know this from the aerial photography, because this was the burned-in route. And then later in the 20th century, this was the main route into the Durbin. And then today, people access Durbin through Bell Road, I believe. But this is really helpful, because you know, this is interesting. But then, when we zoomed in on the actual farm, it tells us, you know, a wide swath of information about how the farm was laid out, and including the barn, the pigery. There's a structure here, we call the wash house. Might have been a wash house, but this structure over here, the spring house over further west and to the south, actually shows up in the 1979 photograph later. But there are all these other outbuildings, really sort of classics or 19th century outbuildings you had in a farm, and it really helped us understand how that farm operated. Here's a picture from, I think, circa 1971, listing in the National Register was made for the Durbin. And there's a silent with it. And then this was an aerial shot from 1979 that was taken, and it shows the beginnings of the golf course construction. And this aerial shot was low-flying airplane took this. Gave us some other information about some things, some later additions that hadn't yet happened here. So all this helps us to understand the sequence of how things changed on the farm. Here's that spring house. And the spring feed is still there. They modified that, I guess, when they built the golf course and dug out a pond. But the day we were there in March, you can see the water bubbling out. And that feed's still there. And that's why the Durbin House was most likely built here. So I'm going to turn it over to Jay now. He's going to talk about the geology of the site.
Geology.
Can you guys, sorry.
Are you not all excited about the geology? This is the best part.
Well, first, I'd like to thank everybody on my behalf for including me in this project. My background is in geology and archaeology. And what I did when I started with this project was I gained access to Maryland Historic Trust, RTIS Network, Medusa. And I went ahead and downloaded this map. Lost laser.
Yeah. Let me give you this. Just don't shoot me in the eye.
Oh, you know what? It's too bright.
I think it's about. You could just walk over and stick your finger out.
Yeah, here. All right, I can do that. So after I gained access to Maryland Historic Trust database, I went ahead and gained access not only to the plot of land and its geo-reference of 170-plus acres, but I was able to gain access to all of the archaeological sites and cultural sites surrounding it, so that I could piece all of it together, learn a little bit more about the relationship of the Durbin House to the other sites around it, Lee Masters Iron Foresite, the Orin Door Flying Kilns, the other areas like that. But more importantly, it gave me an idea of the landscape and how the landscape may have been used. The other thing that, as an archaeologist, Maryland Historic Trust requires me, as an archaeologist, to do, is not only to look at the historic land use of this property going back to the 18th century, but to look at earlier phases of human occupation of the site. So one of the things that I did was to look at this landform. And knowing my background in geology, I went ahead and looked at it from a very geologic landform point of view. And what I found was, this is a very odd landform. If you look at the Piedmont, if you walk through the general Piedmonts, you have V-shaped valleys, you have slopes, you have a lot of topography that is very, very steep. And this is a very flat, broad area. And this was my first clue that this was not a normal landform. And what I decided to do was to go further and a little bit deeper. And what I found was, the Durbin House property in the area of potential impact was part of the larger Wakefield Valley-Sinkline Valley form. Once I knew that, I was able to access Maryland Historic Trust documents and past research that showed a lot of that work being done by Dr. Curry at Maryland Historic Trust, that this valley system here had been used as a potential means of easy travel through the landscape by pre-contact peoples, by indigenous peoples, for thousands of years. The other thing that popped out to me as a geologist is something you almost never see in a Piedmont. It's this tiny little yellow strip right here that runs into the Pike Creek watershed. And on this map, which is the red red at all map, it doesn't clearly show it. But when I ground-troughed it, that layer of material extends all the way up here to this spur, this knoll that sticks out into the area of potential impact. These are gravels that were created during the last glacial maximum. So these have the potential to hold material culture artifacts going back possibly 20,000 years. This required me to do a lot more footwork on this project than I normally do. In the Piedmont, normally, the surface is completely eroded away. Everything washes down the stream systems. But because this area is the sink line bounded by the Avondale Fault, it has trapped all of the sediment in place. This is a very rare and unique situation. So one of the things that I did was walk the entire site, looking for this ordinary alumium, looking for where it was in the landscape, and of course, doing normal archaeological field survey, walking to look for flakes or pre-industrial artifacts on the surface. All of those were point provenanced with GPS, using GPS and the Russian bonus system, so that I could keep track of artifacts within less than one meter that were found on site. And some of the things that we found, and possibly the most exciting to me, was in an area that had been disturbed when the golf course had been created, was this flake of rhyolite. Now, rhyolite does outcrop in this area. We do have small rhyolite outcroppings, but they're not this type. This type is normally found in Pennsylvania, which means that this probably was brought in long distance. The other thing is the form. You have a nice spur right here at the end, and then you have retouch flaking along the edges. This is what's known as a spurred hand scraper. And these are very, very common in paleo-Indian to archaic assemblages. And that's a timeframe between 13,500 to about 8,000 BP. So a very, very early and potentially diagnostic finding for the site. One of the other things is, this is not an isolated artifact. There are small flakes in two clusters on the site. And I'm going to recommend that those areas be further investigated. If these are in situ paleo-Indian pieces of material culture, this could be potentially one of the most important sites in all of Maryland. But that needs further research to verify. Doing an additional soil survey of the site, I've identified areas that potentially may have sinkholes. And let me go back real quick.
We got lots of sinkholes.
Yes.
Oh, we got sinkholes.
But this spur that comes out will have enabled people thousands of years ago to look down Wakefield Valley-Sinkline for over a mile. So if you're a paleo-Indian hunter-gatherer, if you want to see large mammals to hunt, this is your perfect vantage point as they're moving through the landscape. The other thing is, the entire landscape would have been different back then. It would have been much more open. It would have been more akin to a Russian taiga. So small stands of fir trees, not as much soil. So they would have been able to see all of this. Located down here, based on a soil map, the CERGO GIS soil map, and also my ground truthing, there's likely a large sinkhole there. And due to the presence of carbonates, calcite rocks in that area, the calcium has the potential to preserve biological material bone. So if there were any animals that fell into that sinkhole, their bones potentially, even tens of thousands of years later, could be preserved in that area. So you have at least two areas that are paleo-Indian and archaic on the site. And then you have a potential sinkhole that may contain fossil material as well. Now, as Matthew has mentioned, the Durbin House is adjacent to a spring. And that spring would likely have been used by pre-European people as well. It's also situated in the geology in such a way that the bedrocks, which are metamorphosed cemetery rocks that were part of an ancient ocean, they're full of salt. So it forms natural salt licks. Most of that has been washed away over the last 10,000 years. But that would have caused, or that would have led animals in the area to preferentially come to this valley, not only from shelter, from the winds coming off the Wrench and Ice Sheet and other things like that, but because of the natural resources here. So you have this area that has the great potential for preserving and also maintaining human habitation going back 15,000 years. It's also the same reason why the Durbins chose to build their house there. There is no heavy evidence, or significant evidence, rather, for human habitation into the woodland period. That is, from about 3,200 BP until contact with Europeans. I did not find any diagnostic smaller flakes, ed flaking, or other stuff like that. There was no pottery on the site when I was doing the field walking. However, I did come across these two artifacts close to a relic waterfall. You have a preserved waterfall at the site, which probably dates to the Younger Dryas, about 12,700 years ago. And close to that, I located these two, what are known as cupstones. So as the paleo-Indian period ended, it went from a taiga to more of a boreal forest, like you would find in northern Canada, lots of fir trees. And slowly transitioned to having small patches of deciduous forests, oaks, hickories. At this time, native people started to harvest acorns and hickories called massable resources, and they would grind them up. And that's what these cupstones were used for. They're used for grinding those materials. They're very, very common for the Middle Archaic, roughly 7,000, 7,000 to 9,000 years ago. But the fact that there were two of them close to the surface is indicative that you have resource extraction going on on this property. And this needs to be explored further. So with all this in mind, I went further and continued field walking. I did find some of the remains of the outbuildings that Matthew spoke about. There is a dump on that knoll where they demolished some of the outbuildings of the Durbin House. And they spread it along an old fence line there. I believe that underneath that, we may have preserved human habitation cultural material. I did work on one other golf course site a few years ago. And what we found was, wherever they built a mound for the golf course, underneath that is intact stratigraphy. So wherever there's a mound, you're likely to have intact cultural material. All this will need further work and more work to verify. But I am excited about this. And I hope that my geologic background and my archaeological background for this report will not only help you understand the Durbin House and the resources that the Durbins were extracting during the 18th century, but also look at how people up to 15,000, 20,000 years ago were also using the resources in this area. There's one last site I'd like to mention. This one particular cupstone right here is made out of material from a basaltic dike that's been metamorphosed. And there is an outcropping of the same material on the back of the knoll that I pointed out. That is probably quarry site. So you also have them quarrying the local material. You have all of the geological material. The iron that Lee Masters was coming here to smelt in his forge would have been used to make ochre for paint. The limestone would have also been used for paint. All of the resources and the landscape are conducive to human habitation. And there is also physical evidence for human habitation going back at least the archaic, possibly. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Matthew.
Great job tonight. I'm not sure how I follow that. But anyway, I worked on the social history. And let's see, sorry, I didn't get the orientation on this. Is this what I need? Yeah, there's button on the right side, on the right-hand side, move forward. Okay, there we go. Thank you. You know, basically studying the owners of the Durbin House. This is a complete listing of all those owners over the course of time. And the social history of the Durbin House and the farm really offers a broad brush study of early Westminster and Carroll County. The story begins with Samuel and Anne Durbin, who were newlyweds from Baltimore, who moved to this area in the 1720s. And they were a courageous lot, as was everybody that was moving here at that time. Because at that time, this was really the western frontier in the mid-Atlantic region. Matthew mentioned earlier that they built a log cabin that's on the Tahoma Farm Road. It's still there. And during their time, they raised 13 children. Some of the children moved to Kentucky, others stayed here, including their firstborn son, William, who pieced together several parcels of land that would comprise the core of what is now Wakefield Valley Park. Here in 1767, William constructed the first section of what is now known as the Durbin House. Durbin and his wife Mary had eight children, who undoubtedly were very involved in the operation of the farm. Given the lack of tools, much less machinery, establishing new farm was a greater endeavor than at the time. They could only basically take several acres of farm land each year. But little by little, they did. Locally, initial harvests included tobacco, but they were replaced soon after with stable corn and wheat crops, something that was introduced by Germans who were migrating to the area from Pennsylvania. William was apparently a successful farmer. He raised hogs and sheep, as well as planted rye and wheat. He was successful. Noteworthy about William and Mary Durbin is, of course, their conversion to Methodist. William Strawbridge, who was an Irish immigrant, moved here in the 1750s with his wife. And he was really, was established in the first Methodist groups in America. And he did that here in this area. He and his wife had a home in near New Windsor. I guess you're all familiar with that. And but anyway, the Durbins befriended the Strawbridges. And the Durbins were a regular spot for Methodist meetings or church services. I mean, as we would think of them today. Succeeding members of William's family did remain in the Methodist church. Other research findings that, you know, were discovered included the Durbins' participation in the French and Indian War, their later support of the American Revolution, their participation in the development of local schools, civic affairs, business, and religion. They were very involved. While the Methodist church initially declared slavery the great national evil, the church split on this issue in 1845, creating the Southern Methodist Church, which condoned slavery. Although there was no evidence of slave ownership within the first three generations of the Durbin family, Nicholas Durbin, who appears to have been wealthy, did own several enslaved men and women on and on throughout the years. This change may have occurred following his marriage to his first wife Catherine, who inherited several slaves herself. The farm and its owners continued to prosper. It remained in the family for four generations, until Andrew Durbin sold the farm in 1869 to a retired doctor who just had ownership of it for three years. The farm was then sold to Benjamin Bixler in 1872 and remained in family ownership until 1963, when Anna Marie Engler Beard sold the house and farm to Dr. L. Earl Griswold, who was chairman of the sociology department at Western Maryland College in O'McDonough. Griswold carried the Durbin and Bixler traditions for a long period of time in the 1800s. And then, of course, in the 1900s, it was largely a dairy farm. And so anyway, and in the late 1970s, he was doing it, Griswold was, you know, both teaching at the college and then, you know, raising these cows. So it was not a full-time occupation. And I guess at some point, he just got the better part of them. But anyway, in the late 1970s, he initiated the property's redevelopment as a residential golf course with the hope, his hope was to retain as much green space as possible on this farmland, while, you know, there being some development as well. So that was his goal. And I suppose Hank Majewski got wind of this and then, you know, had a greater vision for it and purchased the property from Griswold in 1979. And I think from that point on, you all are very familiar with the history. But the farm, what I think is interesting about it is that with the exception of 20 years prior to it becoming a golf course, this farm was owned just by two families. And I mean, this, you know, shows the real connection between the farming that people, families have in their blood, you know. And that's what I think this story really is about. It's about farming and families. And it tells a great tale of Westminster and Carroll County. Are there any questions? I buzzed through that. The report that you have is a lot more comprehensive. But. We'll have questions at the end. Okay. Thank you. So the report focuses in on the architecture of the building too. And while Scott was doing the research, yes, we are brothers, by the way. He was doing the research on the family. You know, we were digging in and crawling on the house and trying to figure out what came first, second, third, and fourth, and so on. And, you know, I kept calling Scott and saying, what do we know about the family? What do we? Because oftentimes, things happen to the house when major changes happen to the family. And eventually, we did get that information, you know, pulled together. And thereby, that information did essentially fit with our estimate of change to the house. And we'll get into that here in a minute. But so Division VI focuses on the physical conditions of the house. We look at it piece by piece, part by part. This is a limestone building, would have been locally quarried limestone. It would have been plastered with earthen plaster on the inside and outside. And the condition of the plaster, to our eyes, looks good. But as Alicia pointed out, what we're looking at isn't mostly the original plaster. It was replastered with a Portland-based product at some point. And that may be why it looks so good. I don't know, because the limestone can tolerate the limestone. We're looking at the windows, and the windows tell a great story. You've got six-over threes, nine-over sixes, two-over twos. And all those windows come at different times in the history of the house, and they again are clues to what came first, second, third. And the great news about the Durbin is that the windows, there are enough X and cop samples of these windows to replace those that are missing or damaged. Couple sashes are missing here in the back. And then the doors, the exterior doors on the ground were pretty much all gone. But before I go to the next slide, I just want to point out that the metal roof on the building is covering up cedar shakes, which is the original roof. This metal roof's probably 100 years old, but we believe can be salvaged and coated and saved. And so, good shape, good news for the roof. On the inside, we've got some nice examples of interior doors. Here's a four-panel race going up to the attic. And then there are battened doors in other parts of the house that were early, early doors from the, could be from the 18th century. Here, this casing here on the right is from the northern block of the house, which we're estimating was built in 1850. And the wonderful part of that is that while we're missing the door, we have all this inset panel work, which tells us exactly how the front door is panted. It had a little panel, and then three smaller panels up above. So again, there are enough cues here to tell us how to put things back together. The fireplace is quite interesting. We've got some fireplaces here that could very well be from the 18th century. This first one on the left's upstairs in the middle section, which we think is the oldest section of the house. And someone, probably in the 20th century, came on and stripped the paint off of it. But nonetheless, you can see the millwork. But nonetheless, you can see the millwork. And wainscot chair rail around the perimeter of the second floor, which ties into the windowsill elevations. Again, sort of a standard detail from that period. Downstairs, when it was turned into a golf clubhouse, they attempted to follow the pattern upstairs, but it's a modern addition because the chair rail doesn't match up with our windowsills. Here's a, you know, sort of, this looks like a throwback to a bread warmer or some kind of warming cabinet next to the fireplace. And then other treatments in the report that we document are the conditions of the ceilings and the walls and the floors. These slides depict some of the different conditions. You know, we still have the earthen plaster, we think, on the inside of the building. In some cases, the walls are furred out with modern drywall. In some cases, walls are removed. This is the large roof downstairs that includes the southern block and central block. And at one point in time, there's a staircase, and at least two are the locations we figured out. So this staircase is the addition that came along when the back kitchen was added. That is presently the only way upstairs. So breaking it down, we looked, this is the front elevation of the house. We believe the center block was built in the 1760s as reported. It has a, the central block has a cellar. And then the south block, we believe, was built soon after. I mean, there are very similar features about it and qualities. Could have been in less than five years. It could have been sooner than that. And then we think, based again on the details that remain in the house, that the kitchen addition was then built. Because there's evidence in the attic, when we go to the attic, we can look back at the back wall of the south block and see that there was painting above what was an exterior window facing that section. So and at one point, there was a terrible fire that burned the entire roof off. So the roof shingles we see up in the attic now are not the original roof, but again, quite old. You know, easily could have been from 1800 or even earlier. And that leaves us with the north block, which we believe was added in the 1850s. It's funny because in the entry to the, in the National Register, if the person writing the report thought this was the oldest section. But, you know, if you spend ten months in the building, I think, you know, you get to know it a little better. So and in the future here, Alicia's going to talk about some of the conditions in the house. And she'll refer to central block, central block, north block for reference. Here are the floor plans, and I'll go through these quickly. But there's a basement in the center in the north block, and then crawl space in the other sections. This is odd jog in the wall of the center section. I'm not quite sure why that was. Either it was a stairway, early stairwell down to the basement, or maybe a built-in cupboard. First floor, essentially about 900 square feet here in the front section of the house. The kitchen, sadly, the fireplace has been rebuilt completely, so there are no details of the early hearth. I think the footprint of the hearth is accurate and the placement of things is accurate. And then the second floor, we see the divisions again of the south, central, or north block, the kitchen addition. And yeah, it's just, it's interesting how at some point in time, there was an effort to really pull all the different additions together, make it look cohesive. And that's why we see two-by-two windows across the top, nine-over-sixes down below. But, you know, that's not how it was earlier on in the appearance of the house. Here's that slide showing the backside of the south block. And here, they actually painted in sort of a fake jack arch on the stone to make it look like, you know, cut stone jack arch. But in fact, it's decorative painting on the outside of the stone. The other thing that Doug Reed, who was a preservation consultant, worked with us, surprised at the size of the attic. It's really unusual. Now I'm going to pass it over to Alicia, who's going to talk to you about the structure.
Well, I'm here to, my part of this was to assess the structure, the visible portions, to get an idea of what was salvageable, what needed replacement, what the limitations of the uses are based on the structure that was there. This is sort of an unfortunate picture to start with. This is in the central block, in the cellar. And these are the most magnificent termite trails I've ever seen. Needless to say, termite treatment is necessary if it has not already been done. I almost assume that it had. The first floor of the central block is, I requested that it be cordoned off so no one could be hurt in that area. Such poor condition. Let's see here. Okay. I progressed through the report basically section by section, starting in the two-story center section. This is the roof framing over that area. It also extends, the same roof framing because of the fire, extends over the south block as well. What's typically in roof framing and old structures, if you run the numbers on it as a structural engineer, you wonder how it ever was stood any snow at all. But miraculously, they do. And I actually feel like the old rafters and roof framing are really fine the way they are. They did at some point take collar ties out. And I do believe that they should see, you could see the pegs there. I do believe that they should go back in. But that's a whole study for another time. So the central block, do you see how I ran this slide here? Okay, the central, the central block for a floor is a wreck. And we don't know, we were talking about potentially replacing the joist in kind, their log joists. And well, some log and some song. But something has to be done. It's unsafe. This is a view under the south, the south block. These are actually beautiful hewn joists. They could not get up in there. And they actually look to be in remarkable condition, parts we could see. I believe that the span is quite long for the depth, and there's a certain, a good bow in it. But the, here, it looks like, looks like there are stones tucked underneath them sort of midway that hope. This needs more investigation, but I'm very hopeful about this area. However, the floor sheeting is in very poor condition with termite damage. But termites and other insects prefer certain species to others, so we might be very lucky here. This is the second floor of the south block. You could see quite a bit of deflection in these joists. Similar joists are over the center block. But they're supported by a beam which may have replaced a wall at some point, but we're not sure about that. Surprisingly, these joists, even though they're very deflected, are capable of supporting very light residential loading without having to, without much intervention. So that's good news. This is evidence of the stairway, which is in the southeast corner. See the peg from the old nail post? And here we are in the north, the basement of the north block. The floor framing is actually more robust because it has, already has a beam across it. But here we are with our friends again. But there's been a lot of remedial work done in here. Some of these joints have been sussed, which means just put better material, new material next to it to reinforce. And if reinforced, if the bad numbers are reinforced, then this can actually take a fair amount of load. I think I determined it was as much as 75 pounds per square foot, which is suitable for the public to be walking around safely and for maybe exhibits or the like. So there's a lot of potential in the first floor of this, in this area. This, my favorite, another termite trail. This is in the north part. This is an old stairway that was framed in. This is a typical joist, but not all of them are in poor condition as I said. This is access. The cellar. There's another, other joist. Really, I'm very excited about. Okay, this is the kitchen, sorry, this is, yeah, the kitchen. And you can see that this, the, there's stone up to this level. And then from then on, it's framed, to the best of my knowledge. It's framed on a ledge. There's quite a step up to here. This floor framing was, the floor framing below here was visible. And because it's such a small space, small span, again, here, assuming wood in good condition, which you can't really assume it. You have to look. You have to take finishes off and do a full investigation. But this would be suitable for either residential or light office loading. And I'll get to the exterior. So in this room up here, there was a lot of slope in the floor toward this, toward this corner. It's visible in the wainscot, the chair rail. Perceptible as you walk across it visually. And the joists are set into the stone, they're pocketed into the stone. And there didn't seem to be anything disturbed there. I didn't see evidence that the ends of the joists have broadened or so on. So I was really scratching my head, especially because when you look at this, you don't see any, you don't see cracks. There are really no more than hairline cracks. The exterior is actually in very good condition. The stucco is. So my thought was that it was a result of quite a bit of settlement in this corner. Downsides, non-existent, or, you know, poured drainage and so on. And it's settled. And they decided, well, we'll just live with that. And let's, and they stuck it, stuck it. And there's no evidence of any further movement. So that's good news. The porch is in terrible condition. It would need to be completely rebuilt. See, these rafters have completely separated from the house. I'm surprised that they haven't completely fallen down. There's a huge dish. It might not be so evident. But back to the roof, you know, this is a fairly straight roof line for an old house. There's a fair amount of deflection in the rafters, you can see, but there's not a huge saddle. There's a little bit more water here. Never have a good picture, but this whole floor system is rotted out and unsafe to walk on at all. The piers are probably salvageable. No one's really talked about these pieces of building, other than the historic stuff. This is, this is the old concrete block, the concrete block bathrooms and so on. It's a concrete block building that's been covered up with the siding to make it look not like a concrete block building. And it's really in reasonable shape, except for the roof, the roof framing. There's a crack in here. This has been a little foundation subsidence here. This is what we're calling the sunroom. And there's nothing left of the framing that's worth saving. The foundation may be salvageable, though we have to do, have to do some investigating to see how deep it went. Maybe it's not underfilling in the future.
Thanks, Alicia. Now we get to possible uses and interpretation. And I'm up here representing my colleague, Ruth Bilabaki. She and I put this section together. And I had a lot of fun doing it as well, I should say. So I need to ask, this is kind of a line listing of different possible uses. The first, the first possible use would be visitor center. You know, this is 187 acre park with numerous playing fields, trails, programming, and events. And likely, likely, it's like other parks, thousands of people will pass through it during the course, any given week in, you know, warm weather, spring, summer, fall months. And to have a visitor center where people can be directed throughout the park and have access to restrooms would contribute to the visitor experience that they'll have and also elevate the distinction of the park. As in terms of, it could also be, very well be, an interpretive center. The house could serve as a center, interpretive center, where different aspects of the house and grounds, both family and farm, could be interpreted through exhibits and/or through docents that would be on hand. Interpretation could take the form of related programming, such as talks and workshops that are conducted through by subject experts, which could expand upon subject matter related to the house and farm. Another very possible important use could be that as a meeting site. To preserve Durbin House as enormous potential as a meeting site, the 600-square-foot first floor meeting rooms that Alicia just described could provide a distinctive meeting location for groups of up to 30 people, for government meetings, corporate retreats, civic groups, and more. And also, too, they offer the potential for generating income. On the other side of that, it could also serve as an event site. The Durbin House and the grounds could provide excellent locations for events. Outside, the city could construct a large pavilion or seasonal tent for public and private events. Excuse me, or a dedicated space in which the leasing could erect their own tents for rental. What would be important about this would be that there'd be handicap, it would be handicap access and there'd be access to the restrooms. But again, all of these could potentially generate great revenues for the park. Alicia pointed out that the second floor occupancy just could really only be used for office. At best, it could serve as an apartment, an office, or perhaps even an apartment and combined, excuse me, office for the park manager, someone who's on site. So then we get into the interpreted exhibit themes. And, you know, of course, one of the most obvious ones are the landowners. Most who visit the house will wonder about who owned the farm all those many years. And this could be really interesting to represent those family owners correlated against a national timeline. Another theme could be domestic 19th century farm life. Farming for most of us is far outside of my daily realm at least, maybe it is for years. But 19th century farming, farther, specifically the hard work associated with the work that is, you know, today mechanized. And this could be communicated through exhibits, workshops. Some fields are reserved, could be reserved for planting, creating an educational experience outside. Um, the farm outbuildings that Matthew pointed out on the map, potentially, they can potentially be recreated. Uh, the spring house, the ice house, the bank barn, um, you know, or at the very least, they can be interpreted through wayside exhibits that are on site. The whole outdoors here is a, is an outdoor classroom, really. You know, another, you know, thing that people may think would, could be great would be that as a house museum. It's an obvious choice, but house museums are kind of complicated because it's generally important that furnishings that are in the house be those that are related to the family members, or at least of that time period. And, um, one thing too is that in, during the past decade or so, house museums have kind of fallen, fallen out of popularity, you know, in the world of museums. However, you know, it may be that, you know, there could be one or two pieces that would be, you know, permanently in the house that had a functional purpose, uh, but also could have interpreted purpose as well. Um, I mean, you know, the sky's the limit here, really. You know, there could be botanical trails, walking trails created for Wakefield. It served, you know, on multiple purposes in addition to exercise. They can help educate and create stewardship for the land. Landscaping with, um, using native species, conservation gardens, butterfly gardens. Uh, these are but a few of the ideas to bring depth to the actual trail experience. Again, the help, I would suggest working with conservation groups, um, who could be solicited and contributed to it all. Another thing that's popular with people when they travel for this as well is birding. Sections of the Wakefield Park might be designated as unofficial bird sanctuaries with trees and grasses that attract birds. It'd be planted. Um, and again, this is a teaching opportunity. Local birding groups might help in this endeavor. Um, to, you know, if the trails are out there, then probably it'd be a good idea to educate the nest of wildlife that they may encounter. And this could be done through wayside exhibits. Same is true as with the ponds. You know, with fishing, uh, there could be exhibits or interpretation related to aquatic species, plants, water plants as well that you're going to see. That's kind of the list that we came up with. Then in terms of the different types of interpretation, I thought we'd just sort of give you a broad overview on that as well. Um, you know, the first type is onsite interpreters. Uh, these would be people, uh, this is really an effective way and engaging way to inform, um, uh, forms of interpretation that, uh, where they're engaging to visitors. And this could be done through a docent or a historian, um, visitor desk staff that serve both dual roles. They could greet people as they came into the house, but they could also have a firm handle on the interpretation within the house and general orientation to the outside. Permanent exhibits, these are commonly used, as you know, in exhibits or museums rather. And they're intended to remain in place for a decade or more. There are many types of permanent exhibits. There are flat panels, there are display cases, multimedia and more. Um, another, the opposite of that, I suppose, are movable exhibits. And, uh, this is a really good choice. If that space is going to be used, that first floor space is going to be used for a variety of purposes. Um, examples of movable exhibits include exhibit kiosks on casters, which is what we see right here, you know, where the exhibit can actually close up and move to another portion of the room. Uh, the retractable video screens and also reversible wall panels, panels that can be turned so that if another event is going on there, the exhibits sort of go away. Something else to consider, and this is really good in terms of attracting or re-attracting, I should say, audiences to, you know, any kind of museum, are rotating exhibits. And they, they offer specialized content that's intended to attract, return local audiences, but also have the potential to attract, um, new audience as well. You know, a great example of this is the Museum of the Shenandoah over in Winchester. And they constantly have, you know, new shows that are coming in that bring levels to it, but then also attract people from other locations, encouraging them to visit the museum for the first time. Um, I've already sort of touched on this, but wayside exhibits are, they're really a wonderful, excellent and affordable means of interpreting the landscape. And really, any kind of interpretation that, um, is done that relates to the outside should really be on the outside. So, um, they offer twenty-four seven interpretation and flora, fauna, agriculture, outbuildings, aquatic species and more. Um, you know, once again, you know, the, the Durbin farm, it really offers an amazing outdoor classroom. Technology is another way, the incorporation of digital content accessible from smartphones. Opens up all kinds of, uh, possibilities in terms of interpretation. And then finally, you know, this is slightly different from the other things, but wayfinding is really important. You know, getting people to your facility and, uh, and then once there, providing an orientation that, um, because this is a hundred and seventy-seven acres, uh, getting them, you know, around, um, around the park and ensuring that, helping to ensure that they have a really good visitor experience. We were asked to put together, whoop. But that's aerial view. Oh, is it? Okay. You can go ahead. Okay. I like it though. We were asked to put together recommendations and, you know, Ruth and I put our heads together and this is, this is what we, we believe to be a really good response to that. And that is, the Durbin house should serve as a combined visitor center, interpretive center and meeting site. You know, do all those functions. It can greet the hundreds of people that will just walk through because they happen to be there at the park, you know, for, because they've dropped their children off or they're there to check out the trails. Um, there can be interpretation inside of the house. And, um, and also too, I mean, the, the six hundred square feet on that first story serves as a terrific, uh, meeting site. And also too, you know, it's, it could be a really cool meeting site because on some level, the interior is preserved. It would be very distinctive. Um, second floor occupancy, again, we talked about that before, but ideally, you know, um, great to have someone upstairs who was on site, you know, twenty-four seven basically for most of the time. And anyway, a park this large will need to have somehow premises, you know, that, um, can help with the management, but also has interpretive skills as well. We advocate, we advocate the use of movable exhibits so that, you know, all these three functions, uh, the visitor center, the interpretive center and meeting site can be used. And, uh, we just think movable exhibits make the most sense. Uh, these exhibits can be selected based on how easily they can be changed. And, and that is one thing that's great about it is, you know, with that type of exhibit, it can be easily changed. It could be, which, which I think you're always, always like that option of staffing whenever the house is open. Um, you know, we believe it'll need to be staffed after the investment that's made into its preservation. And so it seems, you know, volunteers, um, a bevy of volunteers would be needed. The other thing too, that we recommended was establishing a Friends nonprofit organization that could help to raise funds and support the work of the park. Um, this group would be involved in coordinating those volunteers as well. Another thing that's important, establishing partnerships with ally cultural and park sites and local interest groups. So, um, these groups could actually help you develop the park to offer what is needed. Actions?
Yeah.
Is your time?
I don't know.
I'm sorry. Well, anyway, just one thing that we think would be really important is that if you, um, you know, if you go forward in terms of fitting an interpretive center, that you do interpretive planning, that a plan be put together that will, you know, um, really help guide that. And also that the park be branded in consistent visual, uh, manner. Um, you, this is a really special opportunity, you know, and, um, anyway, it's very lucky that you all have this kind of resource to work with. So thanks very much. Believe me, I overshot our time. Sorry about that. But thank you guys. We, we did have in the, in the report of a proposed reuse. So take some time and look at that. Um, it outlines what Scott and Ruth worked on. And, uh, anyway, thank you guys very much for this. It's been a lot of fun.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for, uh, Mr. Prog or his colleagues?
One, one, and I'll, very short, um, in the middle of time, I just wanted to say, I never thought I'd be sitting in a council meeting listening to words like oriente, a sheet, last edition maximum, younger dryas, and not to have them being said by me. This is even more impressive, but I read the full report. Um, it was fantastic. Uh, so thank you very, very much.
Yeah, indigenous people today especially. And I think, you know, that would have to be an interpretive analysis. Yes, that's what I thought too.
Well, we're looking forward to having the mayor explain all those jumps. In the meantime, uh, you know, I, I did get a chance to look through the report and thank you for walking through it with us. I, it gives us a lot to think about. Um, you know, the one question I would ask is, yeah, as we look at the condition of the house, what's the most critical thing to do to prevent any further decay? And, you know, is there, you can give us a rough idea of what that would cost?
Yes.
We ran out of time.
Well, no, it's in the report. Uh, there are seven items that were most critical that Alicia and I worked through. And, uh, those items were actually included in the grant request that Abby made, I think, back in March or April, Brett. And, uh, was successful, I believe. And so, uh, we have a cost estimate for those seven items. But they include things, uh, like window restoration, uh, coating the roof, restoring the floor in the center block. Uh, gosh, we have a list. I mean,
Turbine treatment would be.
Turbine.
Would obviously be.
Yeah, but, but yeah, we hit the, the critical and most, uh, uh, you know, serious items and, uh, which would essentially keep the house in a way sort of mothballed until the next monies become available.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Gruber, did you want to add anything?
No, I just wanted to thank the team. They were amazing to work with. Um, it's a very exciting project and I look forward to, our preservation steps that are coming in the future. Be in touch.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry to make your meeting longer though.
That's all right. Thanks very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We have no hearings tonight on the agenda. We have one item on a consent counter. We have a motion to approve the consent counter.
President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent count, counter.
Thank you. Um, let's, uh, let's, let's go ahead. Right, um, yeah.
We need to, uh,
We need to.
We need to get the consent counter.
Let me get that. Yeah. Um, all those in favor of, um, approving the consent counter, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Yeah, seem to have it, the ayes have it. Consent counter is approved. Uh, Madam Mayor, your report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I do have a couple of things to report. I'll, uh, make it, make it short. Um, last Wednesday, um, I presented the request to the delegation. Uh, council member, uh, Dan Hoffman, uh, council member, Anne Gilbert were also there. Um, they were well received at public hearing. Uh, and so we got some feedback from, um, the delegation that was there and we'll be sending on a letter to Governor Hogan, uh, for our requests. Uh, Oyster Stroll, it was just fantastic. Um, I spent some of the day in and out of downtown merchants as well. And they were really thrilled with the day that they were having on Main Street. And I think it was probably one of the best events we've had this summer, uh, to date, as far as the crowd and, and everyone really seemed to enjoy that very quickly. Um, I'd just like to say thank you, um, to the chief, Chief Ledwell, for his, uh, work and accomplishments this past week in keeping the community safe, especially, uh, following the bank robbery and apprehension of the suspects shortly after that at the Farmers and Merchants, um, Bank. Uh, I have a meeting scheduled with McDaniel next week, so part of, uh, moving forward with McDaniel was working with some of their students during the January term. Uh, and so I have a meeting scheduled with, um, some of the first, the first year dean and some of the individuals involved in scheduling January term, uh, events for students. And so we hope to use that four week block that the freshmen are required to be on campus, uh, for Jan term to get them more involved, uh, in things in town. And so we're going to start to put some, uh, items together for that, hopefully next week. Um, and then finally, last but not least, um, Halloween trick or treating. Um, so, uh, thank you, Councilmember Dayhall for pulling up the literature, uh, for this or the memo for this. So, um, each year, the mayor and council designates a, a night for Halloween trick or treating. I guess this is soon to the approval of the council, October eleventh. Um, I'd like to recommend that Halloween trick or treating take place on the evening, Sunday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Trick or treating should be conducted between the hours of dusk and eight P M. and be restricted to children aged twelve and under, plus accompanying adults and adult guardians. Residents who wish to participate by providing treats to children should turn their lights outside. Uh, children are advised to wear some light colored clothing as to be more visible to motorists and go to their homes in these neighborhoods with lights. Motors should pay a particular care on the evening of October thirty-first with so many children walking around the street, streets. Um, I know our neighborhood gets very busy, uh, as soon as dusk starts with kids on the streets. Um, and so do take care of that Sunday evening as we, uh, host trick or treating. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. So Halloween will be on Halloween.
Halloween will be on Halloween.
As it always is in the city of Westminster, I think that makes the most sense. Unless anybody has any other concerns, I think, you know, we endorse the mayor's, uh, pronouncement.
Definitely.
You're good. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Um, let's, uh, move quickly to the reports from the standing committees. Uh, our liaison to the Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff.
No report, Mr. President. Um, programming continues at the Arts Council and we're really excited.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Mr. Hoff, the report from the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Uh, just real quickly, we had our meeting on October the sixth. We had several agenda items that we have moved forward to councils, some of which you're going to see tonight, and we are continuing to work on other long-term, uh, projects. So that's it.
Thank you, Shaw. Um, for the Finance Committee, I'll just report the meeting we had planned last week and we scheduled to, um, nineteenth. And I thank everybody on the committee and the staff for their, uh, forbearance on, on having to change that. Personal Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Um, nothing to report.
Thank you. Uh, Public Safety, Mr. Kalachi.
Couple of quick items, Mr. President. Um, the mayor alluded to it, again, commending the police chief and his department in, um, the arrest of the individuals that we believe were probably responsible for the, uh, for the bank robberies that took place. The department worked real hard during the Oyster Stroll, making sure everything was, uh, kept safe during it. And we're of course, we're always very appreciative of that. I'd like to commend the chief personally. He, he, uh, has, has been instrumental in the establishment of the opioid overdose response protocol project. Um, and without going into too much detail on the essence of time, basically, he worked hard with that group to bring in about three hundred and nine thousand dollars into the community, um, uh, through the health department. And they're now putting that, that money's in hand and it's being put to good use to, uh, help, um, treat and cut down on that problem that we all know is quite the plague, um, nationwide. Um, so we're really grateful for what you did there. That goes above and beyond, you know, your regular responsibilities of being the chief of police here. It shows you genuinely care about the community and we're really grateful for, for that effort. So thank you, Chief. Um, you know, uh, I, I, I got to sit here for probably the past two or three years and almost consistently report that crime has been very low. The statistics have been fantastic. And that's still generally true. But, uh, you know, it, it would be disingenuous if, if I said it was exactly that because things have picked up a little bit. We've had, we've been busy. Um, there, there does seem to be a, a little bit of an uptick. Um, not, not sure exactly what that relates to, probably some of that back to that opioid issue. Um, some of it's just having folks that are in town that like to rob banks. Um, but the bottom line is, I know that the chief and his department are working exceedingly hard to really make sure that doesn't get out of hand. I know he enjoys a good relationship with our sheriff. Um, and I know he's, uh, you know, willing to help and step in anytime that he can as well. So we're appreciative of that. Um, and hopefully, if, you know, the public that is watching or, um, whenever this gets reported, obviously, if anyone sees anything, they've got to step up and say something because that's how we end up, uh, getting good information. So, um, that's my report, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kalachi. Um, and, uh, let's roll right on into public works. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, real quickly, same thing, Oyster Stroll, Public Works, uh, you're over here now. Public Works did a great job, working hard, man. I, you know, I'd left town at about six o'clock in the morning to head out to Pittsburgh. The morning, unfortunately, I wasn't at Oyster Stroll. I came back about midnight that night, back into town. And it's as if it never happened. It just was unbelievable. It, it came up and down that quickly, just in the main. I, I, I know. I saw lots of pictures. Amazing job. I, I, I know, I saw lots of pictures. Amazing job. Also, our pure water project is continuing to move along. Um, it's making good headway. It's getting some attention. Um, and I think even more people are, are paying attention and getting involved in it. So we're very excited about that to keep up the good work. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Uh, Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
Uh, no report. I'll defer any additional, um, recreation and parks, uh, reports to, uh, Director Gruber.
All right, thank you. And I have nothing for the Technology Committee. Uh, we'll, we'll go quickly to Council comments. When Councilmembers get a chance to bring up anything that isn't part of the regular agenda or committee report, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I had the opportunity to, uh, attend a reception for one of our latest murals in town and we're really excited. Um, Shannon Scott was the artist who did the work at Johansson's Outdoor Dining Area on West Main Street in Westminster. And, uh, we're really excited. Um, we are noticing a number of murals. I think the, um, who has the laundromat? Amy, yeah. Amy, Amy's laundromat has a nice mural on, on her, uh, on her wall there and, uh, that's, that's, that's pretty exciting. Um, and if I may, um, would it be okay to give a brief report on, um, the MML Fall Conference? That would, that would be good now. I attended, uh, Anne has attended, uh, and, uh, and Mr. Huff has attended also. Um, and I'll, I'll, what's that now? Ms. Gilbert, yes, of course. Thank you. Um, I was trying to just sort of glide by that. Okay. But, um, I'll, I'll yield my time to, uh, Mr. Huff as far as the LARs in the opening session this morning, the Legislative Action Re- Uh, Requests. I attended, we all, we all, we all attended a number of different sessions. I attended, uh, the session on mental health and, uh, the small town forum and accessible commu- uh, municipalities. And, uh, it was, uh, um, a very good session, very, uh, time really well spent. Um, I enjoyed the networking, talking with other, uh, officials from other municipalities. It's, it's pretty fascinating. Um, how many similar problems that we're all working with and it's good to get other ideas.
From other municipalities and municipal officials as to how the, the top of those problems. I believe that's my report, Mr. President. Mr. Huff is good.
Um, Councilman Dayhoff pretty much said all of my comments for MML, um, again, I'm going back to my third second day. Um, so I'm kind of look forward to some more knowledge that show myself over, over the holidays. As far as, um, Oyster Stroll, which has been already mentioned, I just want to thank everybody and all the department heads because I know it's, uh, in the public works and parks and that, that all of our department heads have a, have a piece in Oyster Stroll and it takes a huge amount of time outside of them on the, you know, eight hour workday, um, to put off an event like that, uh, like this. And, um, it would never happen without all that equipment, boots and all that equipment. So, um, I just want to thank them all for all their work.
Uh, just one quick thing, Mr. President. I mentioned that it, uh, is administrator, the same house is first for a month on the job and I just had to compliment her for, uh, passionate.
Uh, yeah, very, I'll just think, mention a couple of things, uh, pretty quickly. Uh, as far as MML and the legislative priorities, they're going to be voted on tomorrow, um, at a general membership session. Uh, but the two priorities that I've already mentioned before were the highway user, uh, the restoration, long-term restoration of the highway user fees, uh, to municipalities. And then also giving municipalities the ability to have their own, uh, police accountability aboard, uh, instead of having to go through the county. I mean, just theoretically, that makes sense. It's not, we would have the option to have our own board. We would not be required to. But certainly theoretically, it makes sense that if we choose to have it, we should be able to have our own police accountability, accountability board. Uh, and then otherwise, I just want to say again, uh, I am new here. I've only been here since May, but being able to see the staff in action again and again, I am impressed with, you know, as a citizen, you, you observe it, but you don't really realize all that goes on behind the scenes to make some of these events happen and all the collaboration and coordination that happens through all the different departments and how well they all function together. Uh, and I think Mr. Kavachi mentioned it, and it's not just internally, we have really good collaboration and cooperation, you know, outside as well. I know, uh, you know, I'm thinking of Chief Ledwell here with the, I serve on the opioid prevention coalition with him and all his efforts in that regard. Uh, and I, I know the sheriff also speaks very highly of him. And that collaboration and coordination is so important for us to have in the community and that we all are trying to work together, uh, for the benefit of our citizens. So that's my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Um, just a few quick bits to leave this, uh, as I mentioned earlier. Um, let's just say, let it be a good, uh, so we enjoyed it and, uh, the thousands of relative people and lots of us is going to be enjoying it. Good luck to all, uh, everything's there on this. Uh, there's some fair fest that under this, uh, uh, the, um,
I think that staff recommends the Mayor and County Council's Resolutions. I would like to say that the Senate, the House, and the committee. And then we adopted that as our policy in policy for twenty twenty third. And the capital, the capital of the massive distribution chart is outlined for that. So that eleven, that is, that is, that is, to include the following amendments. Then, and then the law is our first policy to adopt for the transfer of dollars for other projects. There will be a group of people that think we're in the dollar to any other property transfer. And two, and then the massive distribution chart for the dollar fifty five hundred dollars per day in twenty twenty. Six hundred twenty seven dollars per day in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, and twenty twenty four. The total of two thousand three hundred and eighty point eight nine dollars per day. The commercial industrial category to the public projects. See that the who the new states plays on this public project. Uh, it's time to support some of the other potential that has given them some talent. And state that plays off this present, and has any questions about. Um, does anyone have something to add to that? Uh, um, perhaps, I, I, I definitely listen economically to that. But then, then this was discussed, um, uh, that will, that will actually be a question. So that you have spoken about that, about, uh, um, that, uh, uh, so that I fit to the around there. And one of the questions I asked, uh, 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 that's a, uh, part of, uh, for the, uh, for sale.
To amend Article ten I R restricted industrial zone, section one sixty four dash fifty four special exceptions. Provide for satellite automobile storage excluding car washing facilities as a special exception use. To amend Article twenty special provisions to add section one sixty four dash one five five dot five. Satellite automobile storage to provide new standards for the grant of satellite automobile storage in certain zones. And to amend Article twenty two Board of zoning appeals, section one sixty four dash one sixty six. Action prior to hearing to repeal section one sixty four dash one sixty six dot F. And we will turn to Mr. Depot for an explanation of all of that.
Thank you. As President Pepperell pointed out, there's two elements or items with this text amendment. The first is the satellite automobile storage lot. The city, just as background, was approached with a request to locate an automobile storage yard in the I R zoning district. And this use hardly is not allowed in the I R district or anywhere actually in the city. So on July twenty seven, twenty twenty one. A new satellite automobile storage lot use to be allowed in the I R zoning district was introduced to the Economic and Community Development Committee. The committee supported the concept of the storage lot use in the I R district. Staff returned to the committee on October sixth, two thousand twenty twenty one. Which they reviewed the draft text allowing satellite automobile storage lot as a special exception use in the I R district. With a caveat that this use is only for existing automobile storage, sales and service businesses located in the city. So in other words. A state existing automobile store, uh, sales lot in the city could take advantage of this use. If it was outside the city, it could not come in. The idea was that the city did not want to be a repository for storage of vehicles. And losing a lot of that I R district, which we really want for industrial commercial type of use. Um, the committee supported the draft text and recommended that the draft text be introduced to Mayor and County Council, which is tonight. The second element is the special exception process. Pursuant to zoning ordinance, section one sixty four, one sixty six F. The board shall refer all petitions for special exception to the planning and zoning commission for its report and recommendation. Therefore thereafter, the commission may in its discretion issue a report and recommendation. Uh, so this requirement essentially adds an unnecessary step to the special exception process. After a special exception ever approved. Would typically go through a site plan process, which the planning commission would then approve, make sure this requires the zoning ordinance. So on July twenty seventh, uh, the a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, section one sixty four, one sixty six F was introduced. To the Economic and Community Development Committee, the committee directed staff for support of this draft text deleting that section in its entirety. So on October sixth, twenty twenty one, the committee reviewed the draft text deleting the section. And the committee again supported the provided draft text and recommendation. And recommended that draft text be introduced to Mayor and County Council. Again, these two be consolidating them into one ordinance. So staff tonight is recommending that the proposed ordinance nine thirty eight as introduced for consideration to the Mayor of County Council. On October eleventh, twenty twenty one, he referred to the planning and zoning commission for its review and recommendation to the Mayor of County Council. Tonight, please prior report and available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Depot. All right, let's uh, let's get um, motion on the floor. You have a motion to approve introduction of ordinance number nine thirty eight?
I will make a motion to approve the introduction, send refer to planning commission.
All right, thank you. Um, motion by Mr. Hoff and a second by Mr. Kavachi. Um, I'm going to say, I want to thank Mr. Depot and his staff. I thought we had a very productive conversation about this. In committee on a couple of occasions and I'm really pleased that we, you know, um. You worked out the idea of, uh, you know, ensuring that the city, you know, continues to derive, you know, economic benefit. From this type of activity by, you know, requiring that, you know, this used to be available to, uh, an existing car sale, you know, automobile sales. Business that's, you know, that's located in the city. And I think, you know, as we said in the committee discussion. You know, we want to be helpful to existing businesses in the city, but we're under no obligation to go out of our way to give up precious. You know, you know, land, uh, that can be used for other things to businesses that are active outside the city and therefore not, not creating activity. Within city limits. Um, sort of like, please, we're able to work that out.
Mr. President, I, I just wanted to note that, um. Having looked at a lot of text amendments over the years, having been on Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I, I just want to commend staff because the draft that we received on the committee level, it's pretty much what you see right here. Um, and it is not necessarily normal for me to receive a draft of a text amendment. And read through it and not have any changes or look at it and go. Well, that was really smartly worded or smartly done. And I just want to commend you all because when I read through it, I was like, it was really well. Done and crafted. Uh, I, you even had the termination part in it that for instance, if a dealership moves out. Of Westminster, that that kills the satellite use and that's part of the deal that we're allowing this use as a special exception. To try to help our already existing dealerships that are within our municipality. So I just want to commend you all because I think it was very well put together. So.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoff. Any other comments or questions from Mr. Depot?
So President, I, I just have a, a brief question. Um, so I understand that when I was reading this, this. Coons, Coons of Westminster Toyota was, who is pointed out in the, in the information. So are they no longer using the mall parking lot? Like I'm, I'm, is this in addition to? Because I know they were using that. They were using the lot that's right across from Kia. Is that, what kind of prompted the need for the use on the Meadow Branch area? I'm just curious.
Using the mall parking lot, again, it's not a permitted use in the city. So we did allow those dealerships to temporarily use the mall dealership with the understanding that. They would have to move, um, as the mall is getting more business back in. So I think this pushed dealerships to look at other ways of where else they could locate. Coons is located today outside of the city, but they do forward to the city. So ultimately, Coons would have to annex into. The city of Westminster to take advantage of this use, which they are fully aware of and anticipate to do.
As is all the other dealerships using the mall lot like Honda and et cetera. Cause at one point, almost all of them were parking their vehicles. It really looked like our mall was busy.
Exactly. We've been in, uh, communication with the mall and about those dealerships and. Um, again, on a temporary basis, but that, that temporary time is coming up.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. President, the great thing about this particular ordinance is it allows. You know, these dealerships to stay where they are and not have to relocate to a bigger lot. And by having that satellite lot. You know, it gives them some ability to ebb and flow depending on the marketplace and other market conditions. Uh, so I, I think it's a, a good thing.
All right, Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff. Um, I don't share everyone's comfort on this because I'm concerned that. I'm not sure it's the highest and best use of, of, uh, the restricted industrial zone. I, I have found what Mr. Huff was saying to be relatively compelling and persuasive. In other words, may I ask Mr. Huff a question?
Sir.
Mr. Huff, so you, you're looking at this as, um. Helping support local businesses. Are you, I, I address my, I, I address that I'm uncomfortable. Using industrial restricted industrial zoning, uh, for this purpose. I'm not sure it's the highest and best use.
I, I understand, Mr. Dayhoff, what you're saying in theory, but in theory, if, if they don't have a place to. If I'm a dealership within the city of Westminster and I don't have enough space currently, and therefore I have to find a larger place. Then I'm moving out of my current place, going and taking up other land now admittedly maybe commercial, but maybe something else too. That I, I don't think that we're suddenly gonna have. I don't think our whole I R is going to be taken up with satellite automobile storage lots because of, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Depot. I think we only have three dealerships that are technically even within the municipality right now.
Two right now.
It's, I'm sorry?
I think it's two. We have Honda, uh, Landstaller is developing now, uh, and within the city. Uh, but everybody else is outside the city.
Yes. So, you know. I think we're trying to be helpful to the existing businesses. Um, and, you know, the fact of the matter is, we probably still have. I R land left out there, Mr. Depot. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's undeveloped?
We do, and, and this is type of use, it's surface, uh, coverage. It's, it, it can be used in the future for.
Well, good point. It can be redeveloped because you're talking about, it's a story.
Like the storage, like, like storage facility.
It, it, well, not even that because it's a parking lot.
A lot of buildings have to be torn down or.
Correct. Okay, okay.
More surface that you're going to see out there that can be easily redeveloped in the future. So. That's what we look for too, as I R does get more attractive and businesses are looking. Uh, that could be an option that they then convert or sell and then move further maybe out to the county, maybe some other location, but. And the primary goal is supporting the businesses we have in the city because they are related to expansion. And we don't want to lose those businesses.
And we have a dealership that wants to come into the city for this very purpose.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes. And I love getting people that are already on our water and sewer system to actually. Come into the city, but don't get me started on the history of how that ever came to be.
Right.
But.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Um, Ms. Zimols, did you?
No, I was just agreeing with.
Oh, okay.
Counselor.
Right. So, Mr. Mr. Dayhoff, I, I share your concern. You know, I mean, I'm always, you know, concerned, uh, about, you know. Uses of the I R, you know, land that, because I think it is in short supply and we want to see it used to really generate economic activity. In this case, as Mr. Hoff said, I think the opportunity to, to keep, keep these businesses located in the city. And have, rather than have them move farther out into the county where they can acquire perhaps a larger piece of land that will allow them to house everything on one site. Yeah, this makes some sense for us, you know, and it is, it is something that allows itself to be temporary by its nature, you know. It's easy enough to tear up, uh, you know, land that's turned into a parking lot essentially. You know, if we find a, if, if a higher, better use comes along and somebody's going to do more with it. So I think that's still got to maintain that opportunity. So I think, but your concerns are legitimate. Something I always worry about in the I R zone.
And, and Mr. President, this, 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 we've seen this pattern before with, with Carroll County. We've seen this pattern before in other municipalities. They have industrially and commercially zone property and. They're looking forward to it being utilized and maybe it's not being utilized in its highest and best form. I'm still not comfortable with it, but I'm. I, I think I've had, I think I've had my concerns addressed by Mr. Huff and by you.
This is for introduction tonight, so there's no chance to discuss it and, uh, if you'd like to learn more, I'm sure Mr. Depot would be glad to.
And, and these folks clearly understand that they need to be annexed.
Absolutely.
I'm excited about that.
Absolutely.
Because they're, they're benefiting from, from, uh, the, uh, economic contagion that exists. In the city of Westminster, but they, they need to fully contribute, uh, to the resources that, okay.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you for addressing.
Right. There's no further discussion. Move on to vote. I remind everybody, this is just for introduction. All those in favor of the introduction of, um, the ordinance, um. Uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it. And the motion is approved. Next item is adoption of resolution number twenty one dash zero six. Appointing a resident agent for all purposes for which such agent is required by the provisions of the Maryland Annotated Code. Local government article, section one dash one three zero one. Ms. Zimols. I think this may be assumed or Ms. Lavine is gonna explain this.
Let's, will you go ahead and take it? You are required by state law to appoint a resident agent, um, which is a person or entity that receives service of process. It's a little bit redundant in the case of governments because. The law provides otherwise for service upon you as the officers of the corporation. Um, however, um, in compliance of state law, we had previously appointed, um, Ms. Matthews as, or Ms. Bisaski. It may have been Ms. Bisaski. Um, it had been merged multiple before. Um, and since those persons are no longer at the city, it is appropriate for you to appoint a new resident agent. And, um, as Ms. Zimols has agreed to serve in that capacity.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Lavine. Um. Is there, uh, can I have a motion, please?
So move, Mr. President.
Second. All right, so.
I'll second him.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Kavachi and a second by Mr. Dayhoff to adopt resolution number twenty one dash zero six. Any discussion or any, uh, questions for Ms. Lavine? All right, hearing none. Move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it. And I'll just note that, uh, you know, we are by this action appointing the city administrator, Sarah Zimols, as our resident agent. To get that into the record. Um, and with that, the resolution is adopted. Thank you very much. All right, um. Uh, there's no unfinished business of which I'm aware. There's no new business. Um, so move on to departmental reports. Ms. Zimols.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'd like to start by talking about the Oyster Stroll this weekend. This was, of course, my first chance. To attend the Oyster Stroll. I thought it was a spectacular event. It was really well attended. Uh, I was happy to see so many of you there. Uh, there are quite a few volunteers that are required for any of these events as well. Sometimes they don't necessarily get a shout out, uh, so I wanted to take a chance to thank all the volunteers and those who were voluntions. They tried to do this time around, but we're also voluntold to join. Um. This project, as you've mentioned, and every other event that we put on takes immense amount of staff work, uh, the day of the event, obviously, days before the event. So the I T department is involved. We have spoken about events by twelve, but the I T department, obviously, the Rexon Park Department, Public Works. Uh, the Police Department, Finance Department, my department. Um, there's a lot, there's a lot of people involved in that. And of course, there's always rain in the forecast at some point. So there are, uh, Plan As, Plan Bs, Plan Cs, Plan C and a half. Plan D, pivot back to Plan A. Should we also do this instead? So there's a lot of mental energy, um, that's also put. Forward. Thankfully, you don't get to see any of that, that you just see a great event and enjoy yourself and so does everyone else. So I'm going to take opportunity to thank all the staff that are here now that helped with that, um, and continue to thank our staff. With that, I'm going to move on and pivot back to me before the next, um, report, but I'm going to move on to Rexon Park. Let you continue talking about Oyster Stroll a little bit and also Fall Fest. Give us a little update on, on what you've got, Abby.
I was actually going to give no report because I feel like I have taken enough of your time to communicate with the historic structures report, but. Um, yes, so we just concluded, obviously, two major events in two weeks and so. Um, thank you for your support and your understanding, uh, as we endeavor into those projects. We certainly love to put ourselves out into the community and we love the chance to work cooperatively with other departments as well. So it really shows you, um, what this little city can accomplish when we all work together. So thank you for continuing to support that. And I will leave it at that because again, I have taken enough real estate on a Ravens game. Trying not to look at Tony.
Steph has received an asset. Um, okay, so I, Councilmember Kavachi mentioned, uh, the opioid response protocol project. I'm going to have the chief talk a little bit about that, but I want to just put in context why this is so significant and it really comes down to. Uh, one word, which is leadership. So Chief Ledwell has coordinated with a variety of entities, nonprofit and county entities. Um, in the area to try to address the many, many, many ways that we can help and what he calls harm reduction. Help deal with some of the issues related to, uh, the opioid crisis that we experienced in the county and specifically in the city of Westminster. And those entities were always interested in working together and they were to an extent. But the extent that, uh, this particular protocol project, um, is entirely the chief's, um, vision and then also execution as well. Um, and that leadership is so critical and important to residents in Westminster. Um, and frankly, to, uh, Carroll County as well. So I mentioned the grant opportunity that, uh, the group was able to. Secure, the chief didn't necessarily secure those funds, but it's the chief's leadership that got to a place where those funds were able to be secured. And utilized in this community in a very real way. I, I feel very confident that we're going to have measurable results later to show how this, the leadership. Has helped, um, those who are suffering from, from this crisis in our area. So. Chief, I'm going to let you give your report in general, but if you could just briefly talk about what that protocol has affected. I don't have some of those details.
Yeah, sure. So, um, so the CDC has something called overdose data to action. They call it O D to A, which is a cooperative agreement to fund, um. Things like this. So through the Health Department, through Debbie Finch, who is the alcohol and drug abuse prevention specialist with the Health Department now. We started coordinating this effort and they were able to secure about three hundred nine thousand dollars. What that will fund is. Um, a software system called Cordata Community Navigation Platform. Which I researched and located in Ohio. Cordata had healthcare software. That they modified to address the opioid epidemic through data-driven programs focused on addiction and mental health. And you can read about that on their website, cordatahealth.com, uh, front slash deflection. So we're hoping that this project, product will help the key stakeholders to effectively communicate and coordinate our efforts to address this issue. For example, there are many entities in the community that are working on this. You've got the hospital, you've got the Health Department, you've got Mobile Crisis, you've got us, you've got the, you've got State Attorney's Office. So what this will do is it'll create a coordination system, software product that is data-driven, that will be able to kind of track. The progress and, and who's coordinating, what follow-up efforts and, and what repeat, um. Addresses we have, et cetera, so that we can concentrate our efforts on that. So that's one thing. It'll also fund two additional peers in recovery to cover the twenty-four hour overdose period. So we have Mobile Crisis. Mobile Crisis works two shifts, eight to four and four to midnight. But anywhere from midnight till eight A M, there's no coverage. So the police go out, they respond, we do our best, we ask the protocol questions, we follow it to Health Department for later follow-up. This will provide twenty-four hour coverage. So we'll have a peer in recovery to be able to respond and to interact and hopefully engage with the individuals. It'll fund a, um, full-time social worker to work out of the Westminster Police Department and to assist us with our response and follow-up. With not only overdose, but with mental health calls for service. So it's kind of a direction that the country's been moving in, a quick response team approach. This, uh, these funds will fund, um, a full-time, uh, uh, social worker to work with us on this initiative. It'll also provide overtime for officers to work on a quick response, uh, protocol and any follow-ups. So if, um. If we need to coordinate some, uh, or have some more, um, targeted efforts, we'll, we'll have overtime money for that. Um, we're also purchasing software that'll help us be self-sufficient cracking cell phone passwords whenever we have a fatal overdose. Um, sometimes they get the cell phone cracking we rely on the county to do for us. They've got such a backlog, sometimes we get put on a six-month waiting list. So this will allow us to crack our own, uh, cell phones following a search warrant. Um, and be able to try to figure out who dealt the fatal concoction and the fatal overdose. So we're getting all these things. We're also working on a training program, uh, that's standardized for first responders to help combat, um. A compassion fatigue and to help us to, uh, build a best protocol, um, model, uh, for response to these types of issues. So that's kind of in a nutshell what that funding will provide. Oh yeah, sure. So I know, real quick, um, just to follow up a little bit on the details on the bank robberies. So what occurred is we had the second bank robbery, um, on the seventh. The M O was very similar to the first one. Uh, on the second one, we got a very distinct vehicle description. We, we saw on video. We followed the video trail. We got in the Walmart parking lot, the Walmart parking lot, they got into a very distinct. Silver Honda Civic with a black hood and a, and a wing on the back. So we pushed this information out to our neighboring jurisdictions. Few hours later, the sheriff's office and the Hampstead Police were in a trailer park in Hampstead working on another case. And they were in a, a tight lane and the suspects drove past them on this tight lane. My understanding is that it was so tight that they could kind of just inch, inch, inch through. So that, that they're looking at this car and it's kind of inching past them and they're like, well, wait a minute. So they detained them. Um, we were able to positively ID them through the video surveillance. Uh, we had search warrants on the car and on the residence. They lived in a trailer park. We were able to, uh, collect significant evidence tying them to both the bank robberies, both the pharmacy merchants and the New Windsor State Bank. From the twenty-third of September and they were charged on both those cases. We also got some support from the Frederick Resident Agent of the FBI. In doing some technical stuff to, uh, build a stronger case. But, uh, I believe we have a really, uh, good case, uh, for both of these and, and the arrests. Unfortunately, the newspaper published the robberies, but they didn't publish our arrests after the fact. Um, other things, October first was a legislative mark for a lot, for some of the legislation that directly affects police departments. Specifically, it, uh, limits, uh, some, uh, search warrant ability at residence. One of the significant things that it does is it makes police officer personnel records not completely protected. So. Before, a lot of personnel records were protected. Um, if you had a Freedom of Information Act request, uh, there, it's not necessarily the case. Uh, there are certain parameters around that, but we've already started to receive, uh, P I As. Um, particularly from new sources regarding records. Uh, there's also some other things, um. About, um, things we got to post, uh, through victim services. Um, we have to charge on a criminal citation for a lot more. Um, misdemeanors than, than before versus a custodial arrest. Um, and, uh, we have to do certain reporting to the governor's office. So those things all took place along with some other legislative changes. On October first. Um. We're working on several administrative projects. We're working on workload analysis regarding our patrol sectors and whether we should realign them. To create better response time and workload balance. We trained all our, our, um, patrol supervisors at C N one level and N C I C access. This allows our night supervisors to enter missing persons, felony crime bolos, urgent warrants. And stolen property in N C I C while our dispatchers are not working. Uh, we're working on the, uh, H Q emergency generator bid submissions and. We're purchasing our twelve mobile radio replacements and hearing out the details of the body where camera bid. Uh, we also identified and charged the two juveniles with spray painting in the city park and the other surrounding locations. We're still looking for the suspects in another incident. And myself and Major Gibson are scheduled to go to the Maryland Chiefs Professional Development Conference in Ocean City. Uh, October seventeenth through the twentieth. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief, for your leadership on opioid response protocol project. Those are real people that we're talking about, um, helping and, um. We really appreciate your leadership there. Okay, um. Tonight, we had, uh, an, a resolution about. Water allocation and a conversation about how challenging, um, the water allocation is in general. And so I'm going to pivot over now to the Public Works Department and just remind everyone that the solution for that is the Pure Water Pilot Project. Uh, the concept of which was entirely created by our Public Works Director, Jeff Glass. So also want to thank him for the leadership there. Um, he continues to make sure that that project's on time as much as possible. Um, because that is the solution, uh, for our, our growth moving forward. I see that we're, we need to move on with the time, council members. So, Mr. Glass, do you have anything for us?
So I'd love to take up a lot of time. Uh, my only report is that it's seven to nothing.
Oh, come on.
Don't call me A.
Ah, you're killing me.
That's why I have to report. I texted my entire family. I said, do not.
It's best you, it's best you don't know.
That's not funny.
All right, moving on. We do not have an I T report, an H R or an H R report or a housing report tonight. Um, Mark, have you got a planning report?
Uh, Historic District Commission approved the historic tax credit, the facade approval program for one sixteen East Main, Mr. Peter, Prevalent Spirits. They also approved the facade improvement application for one twenty-one East Main. They did review the demolition permit for two eighty-eight East Main Street and requested the applicant provide archiving information for this structure. That's proposed to be demolished. There's no recommendation yet for whether they approve the permit or not. It's, they want this, uh, archived and reported first. Uh, staff is finalizing sustainable communities renewal applications due at the end of this month. This is a joint effort with Public Works and. Police Department and Housing, all elements as part of this, uh, application. And also Main Street Maryland is partnering, partnering, pardon me, I can't say. Thank you, with Maryland Tourism for a social media campaign called Main Street Monday. Each Monday for thirty-three weeks. Different Main Street of Maryland community is highlighted on tourism social media account and Westminster is picked for October nineteenth to be highlighted. Also, we're providing some pictures and video for that. I, once I have, we just found this out last Friday. I will forward any information to you once I get it. Okay.
That concludes, Mr. President, the department. Nope, Finance, have you got any?
Finance has no reports tonight.
That concludes our department reports.
All right, very good. Thank you.
It was my favorite.
Thank you. Final item on our agenda, Susan, comments? Final agenda on our agenda, citizen comments, when we invite the public to address the mayor and council and any issues that are in tonight's agenda. Uh, I see no one present here this evening, uh, still in the audience, so we will, uh, dispense with any further discussion of that. And so, um, that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Whereas when the, and, uh, without, we're.